And you're screaming.
I say that now. Um, allowing at least a half hour, no other business.
Yeah.
Yeah, with the chief and with the solicitor. All rise please. Good evening, everybody. Before the start of this meeting, we had two interviews for boards and commissions, and we also met an executive session to discuss a personnel issue which is not resolved, and we will have another executive session on the same issue at our next meeting, um, before our next meeting, um, on the, whatever date that is.
March 3rd.
March 3rd, at 5:00 p.m. So we'll have an executive session at 4:30 on that same day. Okay? Presentations, Ready for 100. Are you here?
Sir, for them?
Come on up. Take the podium, Mr. Bolzari. Thank you for the materials you provided to the board before tonight's meeting. Appreciate that.
My pleasure. Thank you for looking at it. Uh, my name is Jim Bolzari. I am a member of the Doylestown Township EAC. Um, there's Jamie Mitchell and Adam Acasis also on EAC. And, uh, what I'd like to talk to you about tonight is a program called Ready for 100, which relates to moving communities towards 100% renewable energy. And we think this is very important, and I'd like to describe to you what the program is for your future consideration. So, I don't think I have to explain to anyone that global climate change is happening very fast, and it's happening right here in southeast Pennsylvania. Uh, we've seen in the news wildfires, droughts, horrific rainstorms in Texas, sea level rise, and locally we're seeing shorter, wetter winters. I mean, this is the middle of February and it's 60 degrees outside, heavier precipitation and flooding, which is going to degrade infrastructure. Skeeto days and more impacts on human health. So this is going to become a real problem for us right now. This is just a chart of average temperature in southeast Pennsylvania over the last hundred years, and you can see that since about 1980, it's been pretty much, uh, a straight climb up, uh, with no breaks. So this, you can see the evidence, uh, I think without any doubt, and, uh, it's only going to accelerate. So Ready for 100 is a initiative, uh, brought to us by the Sierra Club, and this is a national movement of people who are working to, to inspire and inform our leaders to embrace a vision of healthier communities powered by 100% clean renewable energy. And that's really the message. And we're here asking mayors, CEOs, religious leaders, boards of supervisors, principals, uh, parents and students to commit to solutions, uh, that will help us achieve 100% clean renewable energy across the United States by the year 2050. So what are the specific goals of Ready for 100? Specifically, what we're trying to achieve is 100% clean renewable electricity by 2035. That's only 15 years away. And 100% clean renewable energy for all uses by 2050, which would include heating and transportation. Now, I won't go through this entire slide, but Ready for 100, I think, is, is very well thought out and has some very clear operating principles. And I'd just like to point out a couple. The first one being efficiency first, and I do want to commend the township for everything it's done on efficiency, and I think, um, this building and many other factors point to the, uh, the effort you've put towards energy efficiency, and, uh, and I think the EAC recognizes that. We, this has to be an inclusive process where all the stakeholders are involved. This can't be one, uh, one person's initiative. This has got to involve the entire community. It should involve local, uh, energy generation and job creation, and very importantly, it should involve collaboration with neighboring communities. I don't think we can do this alone. So, is clean energy really feasible? And the answer is absolutely yes. Um, I know that chart is hard to read, but the unsubsidized cost of, of solar electricity has dropped by about 90% in the last nine years, and that data is two years old. So the cost of solar electric continues to decline every year to the point where it is now clearly cheaper than coal and actually will soon be cheaper than natural gas when done on an industrial scale. And that's what we point out on this chart, and I, it's kind of hard to point to that, but you see at the bottom, the, is the conventional energy and the cheapest being, uh, natural gas. The alternative energies towards the top, and you can see that wind and solar are, at this point, and this is, I guess this is 2018 data, already competitive with natural gas on an industrial scale. So this is not only the clean alternative, it will also be the economic alternative. So who else has already committed to this program? I can tell you that one in four Americans already live in a community that has committed to these goals. And I'll show you here on the map. Uh, you can, you know, it's not hard to imagine that New York and California have committed to this, but also Maine and, uh, Washington and New Mexico and Puerto Rico and Hawaii and, and hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of cities across the United States have already committed to these goals. And in particular, I want to point out, here locally in southeast Pennsylvania, Ambler, Bethlehem, Downingtown, Haverford, Norristown, Philadelphia was actually the 100th city to commit to these goals. Phoenixville, which is very much like Doylestown, Radnor, Upper Marion, uh, Westchester Borough and the Westchester, uh, Council Community of Governments, which is a local consortium of governments, have all committed to these goals. And so this is happening, and it's happening very fast, and it's happening right here in southeast Pennsylvania. One thing I would point out about that list, not a single township in Bucks County. This is Montgomery County, Chester County, Delaware County. This has not yet taken foothold in Bucks County, and I think that Doylestown Township has an opportunity to lead on this issue. So what are the next steps that we're proposing? The EAC would, uh, recommends that the Board of Supervisors consider that the township commit to the goals and principles of Ready for 100, and the EAC would be happy to draft a resolution for your consideration. The EAC and the Board of Supervisors will work with other local, uh, municipalities and, uh, communities and the county to educate and build support for regional cooperation, which I think is, is the key to doing this, uh, in, in an effective and cost-effective manner. We want to work with residents and businesses to gather stakeholder input and perspectives. And then, as time allows, we will develop an energy transition plan and timeline for transition, and then, of course, implement the plan. So that's all I wanted to say tonight. We're not, uh, we're not here asking you for anything today. This is, uh, strictly for information and consideration. Uh, but that being said, we would love to hear your feedback. We would love to hear your questions. We would like to address your concerns. And then, in the near-term future, I hope that we can bring to you a, uh, a resolution for your consideration. Thank you.
Well, I think the board would consider a resolution at this time. I would.
Yeah, thank you.
So go ahead and prepare one.
I'm sorry?
So go ahead and prepare one for our consideration.
I certainly will. It's, it's actually done, uh, but, uh, I, I didn't, I didn't, I did not want to presume that I should bring it, uh, on the first occasion, but, but thank you for your vote of encouragement.
Yeah, um, that and, and then also, you know, we would prepare one or introduce it to the Bucks County Association of Township Officials who also represent the other municipalities in Bucks County and see if we can get some traction with other municipalities.
Wonderful, wonderful, wonderful. Uh, wonderful. Yes, absolutely. The, uh, I think the key here to doing this effectively and cost-effectively is economies of scale. And if we could get a number of communities to aggregate our, our purchasing power, um, then, you know, we're in the driver's seat.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Rachel. Appreciate all the time and attention you put to this, Mr. Bolzari, and your committee council. All right, um, any visitors or public comment at this point? Okay. Announcements, here we are. Announcements. Next meeting of our board is Tuesday, May, uh, March, uh, March 5th at, uh, March 3rd at 5 o'clock. Ski and tickets and movie flower show are all available at, um, our administrative offices at DoylestownRec.com. We're running a bus trip in this, in, um, to the 9/11 museum and memorial in New York City on April 21st. And Doylestown Township Parks and Rec in, in cooperation and partnership with Premier World Discovery, where has, um, two trips planned for this year. The Colorado Rockies and Western National Parks and September 13th, 2000, um, September 13th, 2020. And don't we also have the, the Tuscany and, that's not on, we also have a trip to Tuscany and, let's yell on Karen. It's not on the agenda. Okay, so there's another trip planned to Tuscany and someplace else. Anybody remember? It's not on my agenda.
I thought Tuscany was not occurring, but...
Okay, well regardless, mark your calendars for two, for some other upcoming events. The Invasive Plant Removal Workshop at Central Park, that's on Saturday, March 21st, 9 to 11. And then the Fall Workshop, Saturday, um, October 24th, between 9 and 11. That's when we, we have a native garden and we go out and clean it, and, um, it's a real good, get your hands dirty and feel good and actually see your, your work in production and, and developing and maintaining that beautiful natural native garden. And then, um, then we have this, um, Celebrate Trees for, uh, also sponsored by the Environmental Advisory Council. And they've organized 10 Days for Trees. It's going to run from April 16th through April 25th, and the celebration is going to include, um, a movie night and book discussion, um, poetry share, pop-up forest, um, guided walks, talks and tree memories. So, um, gather your tree memories and, and, and participate. And also, it will culminate, of course, in tree planting. I believe it's at, um, Pool's Corner. So, um, there's a lot of, there's a meeting schedule and there's a, um, program schedule for that somewhere here today. Yes? Somewhere for the EAC?
It'll be in the newsletter and we'll have information, um, on the website as well.
Very good. Next item on the agenda is the approval or consideration of approval of the minutes from February 4th, 2020, Board of Supervisors meeting. Everyone had a chance to review the minutes? Any corrections or changes? Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Correspondence from the Solicitor?
I don't have correspondence and I have no report until we get to the land development topic.
Okay. Chief?
Nothing to report.
Engineer?
Nothing to report.
Director of Ops?
Don't report.
Manager?
Nothing at this time.
Supervisors, um...
I was going to say, the, uh, dog park, uh, has been distributing out key fobs. They've putting a new, uh, access security system in. As of Saturday, I don't think it was still, I saw the four cameras. I'm not sure when the actual security system...
Be kicked in, but close, so in the meantime, still come to the township and get, uh, I'm going to keep off because eventually you're totally off.
Uh, the only thing I have a question about is, um, our, I think we were going to make a committee earlier, Mr. Cheever, uh, do you want to make a recommendation for, for the Board of Supervisors or do you want to make a statement about, uh, especially?
My impression seems interesting.
And then it's, yeah, it's one of those, because I don't know what we're discussing. And if he's interested in the Board of Supervisors, I think, uh, I'll make a statement to the Board of Supervisors.
Your second?
I'll second.
All in favor of this change to the Board of Supervisors? Do I?
I.
Or did you have another proposition?
Uh, no, it's done.
Okay. All right, thanks, everyone. We have, uh, oh, I'm sorry. It's okay. It's okay. No, um, I, um, myself and other initiatives regarding the law partner. Okay. Stephanie and I have been anticipating with the proposed township and... And, um, Association in the DART, in the creation and new routes, um, adding new partners. And, uh, I am pleased, since 2013 to, through 2019, the DART, um, ridership has almost doubled. So it's been a very successful enterprise, and they have just recently expanded, um, DART West, so that it'll, um, include all Business Route 202 up the county line road. So DART West is now in, in play, and we anticipate an, an additional expansion. They're adding the hospital, um, and Lenape Valley Foundation also to their cooperating partners. Um, so congratulations to that, that entity, and, um, Doylestown Township is very proud to be a sponsor of, of, of DART. All right, that being said, moving on, um, unfinished business, proposed park and recreation community center. We received, um, memos from, uh, from Stephanie, Dave Tomco, and Karen Sweeney regarding the preparation of a RFP for Design and Feasibility Study Services, um, a request for proposal, that is, RFP. And attached to the request are, um, memos from both Ways and Means and the Doylestown Township Park and Rec Board. Both of, both entities have recommended that we proceed, that the Board of Supervisors proceed in preparation of an RFP for Design and, and Study Feasibility Study Services. You've all had a chance to review the, the proposals. What do you think? Comments? Considerations?
Well, it seems to me that there's two different things that we're looking at, right? Like, we're looking to see if we want to hire, are we looking at the JD Bravo contract to, uh, put together the, um, RFP?
That's right.
For all of those services, instead of having that done at another time, correct?
Right, do it now.
Technically, this is just to help us prepare the RFP for the design and architectural services.
Okay. So limited scope?
Yes. Okay. Questions? Does anyone from the, um, Park and Rec Board care to make a comment or, at this point? Karen, do you have anything you need to add? All right.
I'd, I'd like to make a, a motion to approve the, um, the proposed, uh, attachment document.
So that's an approve, um, a motion to approve JD Bravo for $6,540 to prepare RFP for the design consultant for, um, proposed park and rec building.
Correct.
All right? I would second that. All right. Any other considerations or discussions? Anybody out there have any questions? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
So, to answer, um, an, uh, email inquiry I got earlier today, I think the next step was, uh, we will prepare this, um, uh, hire JD to prepare this. We've just agreed to do that. And then, um, the RFP will be created, go out, and then we'll see where we are. Got it? Do we have to do anything else? Nope, that's it? Okay. Okay. Thank you for that, guys. Um, next item is the land development for Warranton Audi Porsche preliminary plan.
If I may, just by way of introduction, most of us that have lived around here for a few years, always remember this is the Holberg property, but in any event, um, Sloan Audi Porsche has submitted an application requesting preliminary as final land development pool for a project consisting of the construction of a new automobile showroom and renovation of the existing showroom, together with additional improvements, including alterations to the parking area and installation of new stormwater management facilities. Plans were prepared by Charles Shoemaker, Inc., were dated December 10, 2019. To my knowledge, no revisions yet. Doylestown Township Planning Commission has meeting held on February 12, 2020, recommended approval of the preliminary as final land development application subject to various conditions. As I understand it, the reason why this is happening is that they wanted to, the dealers are required by the car manufacturers to separate out the two dealerships into separate buildings. So they have to have an Audi building and a Porsche building. I assume that's the correct. Um, and I have shared what I call the script with Julie, who represents the applicant, and I think she's fine with the script, but I think she wants to explain a minor change in the plans that has occurred since it was reviewed by the planning commission. I don't think it has any import, but I think she needs to explain that to you, because it wouldn't have been in the plans that were reviewed by the planning commission. Julie?
That's great. Thank you very much for the introduction. Julie Von Spreckelson, on behalf of the applicant Sloan Autosport. And, um, since Mr. Garten summarized our application very well, um, what you're looking at right now is just the existing, um, site conditions, but I'll get to the changes. This was the original plan that was submitted, um, that was, uh, recommended for approval by the planning commission that shows the second dealership, which is being constructed on existing impervious coverage to the west of the existing building that's in the lighter color. The orange color is the new building. Um, and if you can see in the orange part of the building there, in the very bottom corner, there's a little blue area. That was originally just an overhang. It was like a roof area. Well, since we went to the planning commission, which was only last week, um, Porsche has come back with yet another demand, um, of, of the applicant, and they wanted additional display area. So what we thought we could do is take that little area there, it's 1,300 square feet. This is just a rendering of what the buildings will look like. Um, but I'll get to the plan. So that little blue area in the corner, we're going to enclose that so that they can have another display car. And it doesn't require any additional variances. It doesn't require, uh, any waivers. It did generate that we needed 13 additional parking spaces, but Gary Tilford, the project engineer, uh, was able to, as you can see in the blue in the, in the top of the screen there, uh, the blue areas are the parking areas, and those are all inventory spaces. And he was able to shrink them by, um, a foot, so they're eight feet wide rather than nine, which is permitted, and he was able to pick up 14 additional spaces. So with that, that was the only tweak. Everything else is the same, and, um, I guess at this point, we would be requesting preliminary final land development approval and the grant of the nine waivers.
Now, what was the issue with PENDOT? Has that been resolved?
Um, that's one of the conditions. So let me run through the conditions. If the board was inclined to approve the preliminary as final land development plan for the project, the following conditions would be applicable. One, compliance with Bouset and James Engineering Review Letter dated January 14, 2020. Compliance with the Boucher and James Planning Review Letter dated January 16, 2020. Compliance with the Panoni Letter dated January 20, 2020. Compliance with the Michael Baker National Review Letter dated January 16, 2020. Compliance with the SE Engineers Review Letter dated January 7, 2020. Compliance with the Bucks County Planning Commission Review Letter dated December 24, 2019. Next, compliance with the decision of the Doylestown Township Zoning Hearing Board dated May 20, 2019, including compliance with the conditions imposed by the zoning hearing board. Next, the applicant to revise the plans to incorporate the sketch of the landscaping along Route 611, which is consistent with the meeting that took place in the field involving the planning commission on February 5, 2020. Next, applicant to meet with PENDOT together with township staff for the purpose of focusing, focusing on the intersection of Kelly Road and 611 related to proposed improvements for the pedestrian crossing so as to provide a safer pedestrian access on Ca- Kelly Road parallel to the project within the roadway. The Board of Supervisors to grant various waivers that are A through I that are in the review letters, instead of me giving them all out here. Confirmation that the change in the plan increase in the size of the building meets all the requirements for zoning and subdivision and development ordinance as, as well as the zoning hearing board decision. Receipt of all permits improvement any agencies having jurisdiction over such matters, including the Conservation District, PENDOT and the like. Funding and execution of development financial security agreements that are formed satisfactory to township solicitor. Applicant to contribute 25 cents per square foot of the new construction as an off-site construction contribution, which shall be paid as of the execution of funding and development financial security agreements. Applicant to pay all costs incurred by the township subject to the application. Plan shall be ADA compliant. Julie, do you accept those conditions?
Yes.
Can we add anything about our new energy efficiency, uh, thing that's coming that we might be adopting really soon?
I don't know how you would frame it, because I don't know what that means for that.
I don't either, but, you know, solar panels and look at all that ambient light that's going to come in from those big glass enclosures to display your new Porsche vehicles.
I believe we were informed by the planning commission that we can get some credits, uh, for permits for that. So I know that, um, Sloan will be looking into that.
Yeah, so please try and get some green credits, because then it'll, it'll make us, uh, one step closer to 100, right?
Absolutely.
Little step, but, you know, you're new construction, so let's see how much we can do, huh?
Understood.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Um, is there a motion to approve, uh, preliminary final plans as presented?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Subjected, of course, to the conditions, um, enumerated by our Solicitor.
Okay, I'll second.
All right. Any other questions or concerns? Anybody have any out there? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you so much. Appreciate your time.
Number, second item on the, uh, new business agenda is Oscar Hammerstein, the Second Museum. It's a, the plan's going to expire, so they're asking for an extension request, for extension. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next is the proclamation for the Village Improvement Association, celebrating 125 years of their organization. A wonderful, women-owned organization. They still manage the Doylestown Health System. They've been around, like I said, for 125 years. They're celebrating their 125th year, and we're recognizing their many accomplishments with the proclamation. Everyone had a chance to review it. Do we get a new one?
Yes.
Okay. Um, is there a motion to approve the proclamation?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations to the Village Improvement Association, and many thanks for your many, many, many years of work and many years to come. All right, next item on the agenda is the Pebble Ridge Wood Ridge Area Sewer Project Payment Request.
Yes, the, um, Pebble Ridge Wood Ridge Sewer Subcommittee met, uh, last week, reviewed the proposed payment, and they did recommend the approval of it to the board. Dan was in attendance.
Dan, do you have a care to make the motion?
Yeah, I'll make the motion to approve the payment.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you, Dan. Uh, and exonerate, wait, let, excuse me, Tabor Track Planning Monitor Hall. Any, who wants to be speaking for this one? I don't know.
As part of the, uh, sanitary sewer process involving the development of portions of the Tabor Tract, the township has to approve something to go to DEP. It requires a township approval. It requires the authority approval, and it goes to DEP. So it's, I assume that you're comfortable with, it's in the sewer service area, so it's just a matter of moving it on to the authority and then on to DEP.
Motion to approve?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
One abstention? Okay, but I can still sign it.
Pardon?
I can still sign it.
Yeah, because you're not, you're not...
Actually, I sign it.
She signs it.
As a secretary.
So it was, obso...
Oh, good. I don't have to sign it.
You have any responsibility to sign.
I'm totally good. Thank you. Exonerate the tax collector. Uh, motion is necessary. Um, our, our wonderful tax collector is, is collecting as many taxes as he can, and those who are not paying their taxes now go to the Tax Claims Bureau, and so we have to exonerate him of these, these amounts.
By the way, because he no longer has authority to collect as of January 1, so you absolve him from the responsibility and it's converted to the Tax Claim Bureau with the county.
I'll make the motion to approve, uh, exa-, to exonerate the tax collector for the uncollected 2019 taxes in the amount of $38,370.71.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
By the way, those folks who, um, who haven't paid their taxes, that is a public document. If you ever want to take a look and see who they are, you're welcome.
Sort of like the, what do they call that list? Back in the old days, they would put the list of bad people?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, thanks. Yeah, that. All right, now, the next thing on the agenda is very exciting, is the 2020 Performing Arts Summer Schedule, and I think it looks fantastic. Everyone had a chance to look at this? Good job, Karen and team. Is there a motion to approve the schedule, starting with a, um, midnight rock show on June 17th, ending with the movie Hocus Pocus and the, on, um, October 10th? Wow, many months. There's a motion? Is there a second? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. Great. Trash haulers. Now, now, if you're going to haul trash in Bucks, in Doylestown Township, you have to get a permit, so. So these are the individuals' advanced disposal, Delgrugio, Grugios Republic Waste Management, Whitetail Disposal, George Leck, Mascaro, um, and then Solid Waste, Tenary and Tomco, Tamco. Is there a motion to approve the permitting of these individual companies?
By way of information, you can't regulate it. You can just, it's done for the purpose of making sure that you're aware of the fact they're collecting trash, and I think they have an obligation to notify their customers what their rates are. But you can't regulate trash. That's been preempted.
But they have to be permitted.
Yes.
And that's what we're... And that's what we're.
They provide the insurance certificates and other things that you require in the rate structure.
So, so who, who I just mentioned, or the entities I just mentioned are those that are going to be on our website as permitted people who dispose of things, our waste and stuff. Is there a motion to approve the permitting of these entities?
I'll make the motion to approve those haulers.
Looking for a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, um, next item is the New Britton Borough 2020 Comprehensive Plan. It was sent to us previously and electronically. I think we just have to accept it if there's anything that we have comment on.
Yeah, you're, you're being, under Mr. Powell's planning code, all the surrounding communities are entitled to receive and comment on a plan. You're not required to comment, but you may if you so choose.
Okay.
This was reviewed by the planning commission at their February 12th meeting.
Was there any comment you recommended?
They liked the plan the way it was laid out, and they did have some comments that they would like to continue to work with, New Britton Borough. They worked with them on some of the initial planning for the university place that's being built, and they would like to continue that and especially continue to work with them regarding bike and hike trails.
Excellent. Okay, thanks Stephanie. Um, next item is the treasurer's report for January 21st and February 18th. Is there a motion to, to approve both of those reports?
I'll make the motion to approve both the treasurer reports.
Thank you. Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And last item on the agenda is approval of the bills list for February 18, 2020. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll motion to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next meeting of this board is Tuesday, March 3rd, I got it right this time, 5:00 PM. And we got ski tickets, movie tickets, and flower show tickets available at the, at the township building. We're running a bus trip to the 9/11 museum and memorial in New York on Tuesday, April 21st. And we're going to partner with Premier World Discovery for the trip, one trip I see, Colorado Rockies and Rails, Western National Parks on September 13th. It's a nine-day trip. And then we have spring workshops with the invasive, with the native garden in Central Park, March 21st, 9:00 AM, and October 24th, 9 to 11. Is that right? Oh, that's the fall workshop, yep. And then for, to do that, you have to meet at the environmental education area in Central Park. And then Celebrate Trees, 10 Days of Trees, April 16th through April 25th. And there's lots of, lots of events organized around these 10 days and some, some fun, some guided, you know, guided walks and talks and tree memories, a tree planting in the end, and book club, and movie night, poetry share, and a pop-up park, forest that is, and all kinds of other things that these creative people in the Environmental Advisory Council have drummed up for us. So thank you all for all that. Any other business? Hearing none, we're adjourned, thank you, everybody. Good night.
There are documents to be signed.